Okay, I'd like to bring this month's meeting, I'm sorry about that, Metro Historical Commission to order. First of all, this is a public meeting. You're encouraged to speak up, to present a line of reasoning, support a position, or to pose an answer to a question. As you see on the screen, please step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the project for the record. Please focus your comments on applicable guidelines, codes, and statutes, as well as the project at hand. In the interest of time, avoid repeating the comments of others. Especially today, we really want you to think about that. Make sure if you've already heard your statement already stated, because of the agenda, please be respectful of that. And please limit your comments to two minutes unless you are one of the applicants or an elected official. Do we have the statutory one? Thank you. Pursuant to the provisions 2.6 to 8.030, the Metropolitan holds a law. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. We advise to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First, are there any council members here today, present? Okay. Approval of minutes? Do I have a motion? And this is for February 19, I mean, February and March?
Commissioner Tibbs.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the first thing is the recommendation for expansion of Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation.
This is one of two expansions. You'll likely see the southern end in June, and it meets the design, it meets standard three of the ordinance, is embodying the distinctive characteristics of their individual types and the overall period of the neighborhood, and meets standard five, is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Staff recommends the commission adopt the current design guidelines and to also apply the existing design guidelines to those additional properties, and that you recommend this to Metro Council. And knowing that we have a tight agenda, I'm making this pretty quickly, but we are recommending that you recommend to Metro Council and that you approve the agenda, I mean, the design guidelines in two separate motions, if you would. One recommendation and one design guidelines.
So for recommendation and design guidelines?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions to Robin before she gets down? Okay. What we'd like to do is if all the people who are opposed to come first and speak, and like I stated too, you have two minutes each, and if you hear your point that's gotten a point across, just be respectful and either do a different point or, you know, just let that be the statement. So first, I'd like to have all those that are opposed to this to come forward. Please state your name and address, and that's it. And if there are none opposed to what all the ones that are for the expansion, please come forward.
Commissioner Tibbs, I'd like to note for the record, we've received two, via email, received two emails or two bits of correspondence in support.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, my name is Todd Cantrell. I live at 1806 Ordway Place. I was one of the organizers of this, and we just want everyone to know that the neighborhood was overwhelmingly in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shannon Carney at 1802 Laker Drive. I was one of the originators of this as well, and I think it's just the next logical step from what was already done so many years ago. It just makes sense to continue to expand it in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Davis. I live at 601 North 16th Street, and I'm here representing about 12 friends and residents of the neighborhood in favor of this. The quicker the better.
Thank you. Okay, are there any others? All right, thank you.
I have approval on the application to expand the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation District.
Second.
Okay, and that one was first for the design guidelines?
That was for the expansion.
Recommendation of expansion to the council.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion of the expansion is approved.
Motion to approve the extension of the guidelines to coincide with the expansion of Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation District.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so next is the consent agenda.
The consent agenda consists of several items, including 1910 Linden Avenue. That's an application for an addition and an outbuilding and a setback determination for the addition. 1717 Woodland Street is an application for an addition. 1810 Ashwood is an application for partial demolition and new construction of an addition. 2001 Russell is an application for demolishing an existing outbuilding and constructing a detached accessory dwelling unit. 3747 Woodland Avenue is an application for a side addition. 930B Russell Street is an application for an outbuilding. 1123 Douglas Avenue is an application for an addition and a setback determination. And finally, 126 Second Avenue North is an application for signage and alteration to the building. Staff finds that all of these items meet their respective design guidelines, and we recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Are there any of these projects that need to be taken off the consent agenda that someone in the audience would like to discuss? Seeing none? Okay, thank you very much. Closed public hearing. Discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. We're gonna move back and we're gonna bring 1314 Lilian Street. We're gonna move that to the first of new business.
The commission approved new construction on this site in October of last year. The survey for that project did not identify a sewer line running across the lot until they began field staking. A 10-foot easement is required on either side of this line. This application is for construction of a smaller, single-family residence based on the constraints of the lot. This is the former 1314 Lilian Street, now demolished. The new house will be one and a half stories. Its height and width are consistent with recent construction approved by the commission nearby. The width is two feet wider than the widest of those projects, but with the limitation on the site, staff found it to be reasonable and remain consistent with the context. The height and scale meet the design guidelines. The project also meets guidelines for materials, roof form, and proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff requests approval of final window and door selections. Here you can see the sewer line called out. The house will be centered on the lot. A setback determination is requested from five feet on the sides to three and a half feet. The front setback will, is proposed to be seven and a half feet. This is similar to the front setback of the previous home and other non-contributing homes, but less than other recently built homes the commission has approved, which tend to have setbacks from 12 to 20 feet. The recent, recently approved context here, most of the context would be considered non-contributing. Staff recommends approval of the application for infill at 1314 Lilian Street with the conditions that staff approve the selection of windows and doors, roofing color, and that porch columns have capitals and bases. With these conditions, the proposal meets the design guidelines for the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation overlay.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Okay, is, if the applicant is here, they'd like to come forward?
I'm not sure if he is or not.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone in the audience like to speak regarding this project? All right, if not, a closed public hearing. Discussion?
If there's no discussion, I'll move to approve staff recommendation for 1314 Lilian Street.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1314 Lilian Street with staff recommendations. And the next one on the agenda is 112 Second Avenue North.
This is for a rooftop addition, and again, in order to keep the meeting moving along, I'll not go into all the details, but instead just point out the reason for the recommendation for disapproval. It does not meet the design guidelines in terms of the front setback, which should be 30 feet, but it's just under 13 feet, and it doesn't meet the height limitation of one story of 15 feet, as a portion of it is two stories and 28 feet tall. The purpose of the setbacks and height limitations is to keep the additions minimal so that they do not overwhelm historic building and so that they don't jeopardize the National Register listing of the district and of the individual building. I did call the State Historic Preservation Office to make sure, and they concurred with that. Staff recommends disapproval based on the fact that the project does not meet the massing height and setback requirements of the design guidelines, specifically Section H for additions, and could jeopardize the property's National Register listing. And the applicant is here if you have any questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Robin? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and just give us your name and address?
My name is David Plummer. I'm the architect and the appellant for Brad Daniel, who lives at the property in question. I'd like to pass out a handout. Okay, thank you. So I submitted some text with the application, but I'm not sure if you all received that, so I'm gonna run through those bullet points rather quickly, and they're also included in the handout that you're getting. So like I said, Brad Daniel is the owner of the property and lives in the building on the top floor. The building is three stories plus a basement, and of course, it's an old Second Avenue warehouse, which is very tall. The stories reach about 17 feet, so it's over 50 feet tall. The specifics of the case are Mr. Daniel would like to add a rooftop level. The views up there are pretty nice. He wants to add a green roof and some living space up there. The proposed design does not require any building codes or zoning appeals, so it meets all building and zoning codes. The proposed design is not visible from the road, either in a car or as a pedestrian with your back against the wall on the other side of the street. There is an existing elevator shaft in the building. As you know, it's a historic building. The elevator shaft's been there for over 100 years. It's rather close to the front of the building, and as a residence, bedrooms, and I know that the commission is not to get into specifics of interior floor plan configuration, but the issue is, it's a residence, it needs a bedroom. Bedroom requires windows. They need to be on the front of the building. So we're just trying to fit a bedroom suite in between the existing elevator shaft and the front of the building, and that's what's causing the geometric hardship, so to speak. The 30-foot setback that's in the guidelines, I want to point out that it was not in the guidelines a year ago. A year ago, the 30-foot setback was in italics in the guidelines, therefore it was a guideline or a recommendation or commentary. It is now not in italics. I don't know the cause for the change, but I just want to point out that a year ago, had we brought this design forward, it would have complied with the guidelines. It does comply with all the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation, including it will not destroy historic materials, features, or relationships. It will be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would not be impaired. As a rooftop addition, it is set back from the wall plane and as inconspicuous as possible when viewed from the street. Toward that point, I would point out that it is not visible, would not be visible from the street. And finally, it is not constructed so that the historic appearance of the building would be radically changed. Again, it wouldn't be visible, so it would not affect the historic appearance. The proposed green roof design incorporates extensive landscaping and will be an improvement to any existing views from other buildings at the current rooftop, and, well, yeah, you get the rest of it. So just quickly, to talk to you about the pictures that you have, there's a three-dimensional color view where we modeled the full building in 3D, took camera shots, measured the location where we stood when we took the shots, and put them into the three-dimensional model so that we could demonstrate that it would not be visible either straight head-on or even down the street. There's also a building section in your packet that shows the sightline and the fact that the design is intended to stay to where it's not visible from the street. Those are my geometric points about the design as the architect, and I believe Mr. Henry would like two minutes, if that's possible. Okay.
Thanks, David. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sean Henry representing Brad Daniel, the owner of the property. He purchased this property in 2009 and essentially has been spending money in renovating it, both for his business, his business office and his residence internally ever since, and he continues to do so. In this case, he's proposing to add his master suite to the top of the building, much like what has been done in the past before historic preservation guidelines went into effect to the north. Ms. Turner was previously a board member of this commission. They have a residence just north of here. There's a residence on either side, Mr. Schoss to the north, and a residence to the south. And importantly, I, we think, and I want to hand this out if I may, Ms. Ziegler. When my client first talked with me about doing this and collaborated with David Plummer, we opened up page three of the Second Avenue Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay provisions, and in the right-hand margin, it states what is not reviewed in the first bullet point is work that cannot be seen from the public right-of-way. So I questioned whether it would be necessary to come before this commission at all. I just assumed based on that language that this would be merely a staff review and determination that if it's not visible from the public way, there would really be no reason for this commission to consider it, and it would proceed through the permitting process and metro codes. So we've attached that page three for you. On the second page, I've attached an excerpt from the standards for rehabilitation and guidelines from the National Park Service, and this is pertaining to additions for new use, and I've highlighted the fact that it states that a recommendation under the guideline is to design additions to roofs such as residential so that they are inconspicuous from the public right-of-way and do not damage or obscure character-defining features. I think David Plummer, as an architect, has done a fabulous job of doing just that. You cannot see this improvement, and it certainly does not detract from historic features. And finally, on page three, we came across this Technical Preservation Service, ITS number 47, as an interpretation of the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation, particularly rooftop additions on mid-sized historic buildings, which we have here. And I've just highlighted the provision that states that it must be set far enough back from the primary elevation of the building, usually at least one bay, so that it is not highly visible from the public right-of-way, and in most cases, rooftop additions should not be more than one story, but generally are not appropriate for stories smaller than three, three or less. And so the height of this building is certainly taller than that, and again, I think what you have in front of you is proof through Mr. Plummer that this $800,000 investment into my client's residence on Second Avenue will not be visible from the public way. And in light of those circumstances, we ask that you approve this contrary to the staff's recommendation. So we're available to rebut any comments that may come forward, if we may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? I assume to you had worked with staff and gone through it all? Okay. All right, closed public hearing. Discussion?
I just have a question for staff. Given that the overlay states that additions not seen from the street are not reviewed, could you explain?
Yes, I can. What you don't see is the page before this. This section is a general section about overlays in general, and on the other side is a sidebar about historic preservation districts and landmarks. And what you see here about what's not reviewed is following neighborhood conservation, and that is true for neighborhood conservation, but not historic. And so we agreed it might be confusing, so we've changed that. This isn't part of the rules of the guidelines. This was just a general introduction for the design guidelines. But that's following the conservation overlay, not historic preservation.
Robin, another question. So there was made reference to a overlay in 2009, or when the gentleman bought it in 2009, so there was a change. Was that an update of the overlay guidelines since then?
Yes. Excuse me. You may remember that we've revised the signage guidelines, and at that time, since that was a change to the guidelines, there was notification to all the property owners. So we thought this was a good opportunity to update some of those things that have been collected as italicized information and put it officially into the guidelines. So it was noticed, went through the proper process to be approved, and you reviewed it.
And in that 30-foot setback, what was the reasoning behind that?
The main reasoning was to keep an addition minimal. The Secretary of Interior Standards talks about additions need to be minimal and not take over a building, and so I think that was the main purpose behind keeping it at one story, which this one's taller, and keeping that setback, is to keep it as minimal as possible. And again, I did check with the deputy shippo at the State Historic Preservation Office, and she felt like, yeah, to go beyond those measurements was going too far in terms of the Secretary of Interior Standards and could jeopardize the National Register listing.
Thank you.
So in the, the National Register is based on the 30-foot explicitly, I guess that's what's called out in the National Register that, why you brought up that it could jeopardize that?
No, not in the National Register, but in your design guidelines.
Okay. What is, that was what I was gonna ask, but the National Register, because you said it could just jeopardize that.
Right. The purpose of that was to keep additions minimal, because if there's too much put on top of a building, that's what could jeopardize its listing in the National Register. And again, the deputy shippo agreed with that and was concerned about too much being on top of the building. So it's not an issue of invisibility. They've done a great job with that, but the worry was that, again, those, that setback and that height was developed in order to keep them minimal.
Robin, there's a, this looks like a, I don't know if this is a graphic from our guidelines or not, and the question, I guess, relates to Second Avenue as a district and how that, how that may or may not protect a building from front to back, which essentially is front to front, as First Avenue is certainly visible and maybe even visible from a greater distance, although as a street there, there also happens to be a broad river. And so in those terms, while this application doesn't propose that, certainly the new building addition graphic, which again is maybe just a graphic to illustrate the 30-foot setback, how would, the question there is how would we treat this from avenue to avenue, or is the public right-of-way just the front? In other words, if an applicant came on an interior street, would they be offered more, potentially more area with a 30-foot setback to develop than perhaps this applicant might?
If it, stop me if I'm not answering your question. If the building were on the west side, they would still need that 30-foot front setback, but they wouldn't be required to have a rear setback. For the ones on the east side, they're required the 30-foot setback as well, and then on the riverside, they can have a 10-foot setback. Does that answer your question?
It does. I, that begs the question, I guess, a little bit in terms of, on Second Avenue, it's harder to get further back to see than it is maybe from across the river in terms of the public right-of-way and how we balance, that's why we're up here, is how we balance that potentially as what's front and what's back. I think certainly Second Avenue as a district was created as primary, or at least the guidelines have been enforced that way, or certainly interpreted that way up to this point.
Robin, in working with the applicant, was there any other alternatives offered?
No, this is what they would like to ask you for.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm pretty impressed by the design of this, this building in that it's pretty minimal. The, it doesn't have the visibility problem from Second Avenue. There's nobody objecting to it, which is always persuasive to me. I think it actually comes, does a good job of coming within the preservation of the historic nature of this area. I really see it as a, as a good design and an appropriate thing for the owner to do, and I think it's been very, very carefully thought out, and I admire you for doing that.
Commissioner, I respect your opinion on that, and I just want to still, I think for myself, I have the difficulty in the 30-foot, is if the guideline says 30-foot and we allow that, is there a precedence to somebody else asking another project like this? That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, I agree with both of you. I think it's, the project's artfully done, but it's one thing to interpret words like contrast greatly and reward a good design with perhaps some more leniency there, but when, and it's unusual, but these guidelines spell out specific figures for how tall and how far setback, and this clearly does not comply with that, so I don't know how we get past that, and I wonder, because it, I still do think it looks like a nice project, I wonder if the solution is not right here, but in getting these guidelines amended and given that this overlay has many fewer owners than some others, maybe that's a real possibility. But I don't see, unless we've done it in the past and somehow ignored it, I don't see how we just ignore the fact that the guidelines clearly state you can't exceed 15 feet and you have to be 30 feet setback from Second Avenue.
If I could add to that, or maybe ask a question. Throughout our guidelines, we have the word "should" and we have the word "shall." And "shall," as I understand it, means must not, cannot, shall not, right? Should leaves the commission more discretion, perhaps, and I would suggest that, that the design of this project fully meets the intent of these guidelines. In terms of the visibility, it's not going to be seen from anywhere except taller buildings in the surrounding, certainly not going to be seen from the public right-of-way, which I know generally we are most concerned about, and I think they've done a great job in, in trying, you know, trying to meet the intent of the guidelines and being very sensitive to the district and the building itself.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't catch the "should" versus "shall." That's a, that's a very good point.
Well, I've said before that guidelines are, that provide some direction and leave the, this commission, in my judgment, with discretion to interpret those guidelines reasonably and, you know, not in an unfair manner. We certainly don't want to be arbitrary in our decisions, but it's gonna take a lot to be arbitrary. We're, it, the guidelines are there for us to interpret in a reasonable and fair way, and I think, given what the design is here, it certainly would not be at variance for us to approve this particular proposal. Certainly would not be an unreasonable arbitrary judgment, in my view. The guidelines are to help us determine- The guidelines are to help us determine what is reasonable and what is not. And in my opinion, it would not be unreasonable to grant this application. And especially in view of what I think that they have done here to really work to keep it minimal.
One of the concerns I have in the guidelines, in the H, is that the additions should not contribute to the loss of historical character defining features. Features are materials, and it seems to sort of half that historic date at the top now. I mean, and you would only get that from their, I wouldn't have seen that had I not seen their demonstration in the color photos. But it does sort of distract from the top part of the historic part of the building I'm hearing. See, this is where this comes from.
But as far as I can tell, that's hidden by the decorative cornice. That would all be behind. See where the decorative cornice is there? So that, what's showing there would all be behind.
Behind this?
That's my understanding of the diagrams, that they're illustrating.
It's not there, Bill. It's not there.
Okay, okay. If that is true, then, I mean, one of my concerns has gone away.
If I could, I'd like to just point out one little thing. The Broadway District has the same requirements of the 30-foot setback. And there are three rooftop additions I can think of that you can see very well. It is not the intent of that design guideline to keep an addition invisible, but to keep it minimal. And you'll see that it says that in two different places, that an addition should be minimal. The concern is, we don't want this taken off the National Register. And right now, the state is telling us that that is a danger.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bill, as part of your statement was that that is?
The state is telling us that's a very real possibility.
Because of, not just because of this one, but because of the thing, other rooftop additions that?
No, no. Because it is too tall and it doesn't meet the setback requirements, that it's too much for this building.
Oh, okay.
And therefore could damage, could require this building to be taken off, or maybe the entire district at some point if we continue to go down that road. They have expressed concern about that. So again, it's not about keeping it invisible. They've done a great job with that. It's about keeping it minimal.
I was just gonna ask, Robin, if you could remind us of the relevance of National Register buildings and districts as it relates to the commission, as it relates to the guidelines, and also whether, what that designation actually affords the city or the property owner?
Sure. The National Register is one of the criteria for a property to have an overlay. So it's one of the reasons this area has this historic overlay. Of course, it's honorary, which is a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful thing to say to visitors and people who are coming to Nashville that it's listed in the National Register. And also, it provides tax credits. And so property owners can use tax credits when they're doing rehabs. They can take a 20% tax credit that they wouldn't have if it were not listed.
Can I make an observation?
Did you say observation?
Yes, just in, in the initial presentation, Robin, you used the word could. Could is very, very short of probable. So I'm very bothered by, you know, it's one thing to sit here and say, more likely than not, it could endanger this designation. But could is way, way low, way short. And I'm not hearing any proof that it's anything but could.
I apologize for being vague. The state has told me that it's very probable.
Well, where are they?
We didn't ask for them to be here. I apologize for that.
Robin, just to make this, I'm gonna try to simplify this a little bit. The fact that it can be removed from the historic register, is it all based on the 30-foot setback? And that's it? That's the driving force that we're talking about here?
That's our design guideline, so that's the driving force for this body here today.
Okay, what's the driving force for the state, or whoever grants us this historic designation?
The National Register designation, that it's too much building on top of a historic building. It's too much new construction.
How do they describe that? Or do they just say too much? I mean, can you give me some?
In my conversation, they just said too much.
Mr. Chairman, we've got to allow you to understand.
One second.
Hold on.
Yeah, hold on. Let's, I'm sorry. Let's just finish up here.
Robin, was there discussion with the architect on your concerns and the opportunity to minimize this?
Yes. Yes, but, you know, for all the reasons that he gave for you today, he was concerned about making that happen.
Okay.
I have another question too, Robin. Is that in your conversation with the applicant, were they also concerned that their piece of property would be off the registry if could be off the registry? Are they aware and knowledgeable of that?
Yes.
And were they okay with that? Are they?
I can't speak to that. That'd be a question.
Okay, and we'll ask the applicant later, but again.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm having trouble understanding the National Registry and how it relates to our guidelines. Is it, I know that it's important, but is it before us? I mean, suppose we, the state said this will knock it off, or someone with authority said that it will knock it off the National Registry, does our analysis end there? I mean, I don't know whether that is dispositive or whether it's technically meaningless and just another thing for us to consider. I don't understand that, because we're talking a lot about it, but I don't know how it ties into our guidelines, other than Robin had said before that it could jeopardize the entire overlay. That sounds very important to me. But if one building can fall out of the overlay, or, sorry, if one building can fall out of the register, the overlay remains and the guidelines still apply, I don't know that that's necessarily anything that we need to worry too much about. Sounds like it's more the property owner's issue and the effects are still pretty minimal because we still, the guidelines would still apply. So I'm trying to figure out how it fits together.
Yeah, I can help with that.
Perhaps John could help us with that, too.
Okay. I, for one, definitely would not want this commission to have the publicity of knocking buildings off the National Register. That's obviously not what we're all here to do. And then if this is a new area, you know, direction that the commission is going down, then the next person who wants to do it will also be able to do it. And that's where we run the risk of knocking the entire district off the National Register. Again, it is a national honor for preservation, and that is our goal here today.
Do you have something else, Rose?
Well, I'm turning, what Erin said just now really is very interesting to me, whether or not what we do has something to do with the designation of historical places under the registry. And so I want to, I'd like to get John's opinion on what Erin has raised.
As I understand the question that you're now posing, Ms. Cantrell, it has to do with basically whether or not the historic designation status is part of the consideration that this commission makes in terms of ruling on an application like this one. I think it's a factor that is taken into consideration. I think that the answer that Ms. Ziegler gave kind of outlines with some specificity. It is not an absolute hard and fast thing. It's a consideration. Obviously, the Metro Code that sets up this commission talks about the connection. Seeking consistency with the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 is amended, and God knows it's been amended plenty of times since 1966, as we all have, I guess. But with that, it's one of a number of factors that the board has to contemplate. I think the previously raised question, a now revisited topic of precedential value of an action like this, is significant. While the precedent is not hard and fast and absolute, every case that comes before us is unique and should be considered uniquely by this commission and by any court that review a decision by this commission, it is a real issue for all of you to take into consideration. Is this a precedent we're comfortable setting? In saying that, I hope that doesn't put a thumb on the scale one way or the other, but just noting, those are issues that you're allowed to take into consideration. And while the precedent is not absolute, case in point, if you said yes to this program and two months later, a highly similar but not identical project came in, you don't absolutely have to say yes to that. But the precedent is sufficiently strong that you would probably need to be able to explain exactly what you're voting today and on that second case in some detail, why you're voting, the way you're voting, in terms of whatever motion is eventually taken up by this commission, so that it's clear in the event of any review at another level legally for the benefit of all of us.
Okay. I'm gonna open public hearing real quick for Sean, was it whichever, two minutes?
Robin and John, thank you. That was helpful.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. David Plummer again. Let me just point out a few things. First of all, when we met with Ms. Ziegler to discuss the design, we were told that anything, any setback less than 30 feet had to be recommended for disapproval. So if we were inside the 30 feet, there's no more need in reviewing the design or discussion. So with respect to the questions about, were alternate designs discussed, once we were inside the 30 feet, there was no alternate design discussion. Secondly, the elevator shaft that is existing, we're not going to move, change the elevator shaft location in this historic building, is the only reason why we're here. We have no desire to draw outside of the guidelines. It's only because of the location of the elevator shaft. Bedrooms have to have windows by law. Of course, we would all want them to. So we're just trying to fit the bedroom suite in between the elevator shaft and the front of the building. That's why we're here. Thirdly, with respect to the National Register, that obviously is not part of what any of us deal with on a regular basis. But if he is willing to answer questions, Mr. Jim Thompson is in the audience. He is on the State Review Board that reviews and denies applications for federal register properties from the state of Tennessee. And I think, would you be willing to answer questions just from the commission about what would cause a delisting of a property and what would not? It's just coincidence, but thank you, Jim.
My name is Jim Thompson. I live at 2302 Hillme Drive in Nashville. And I'm on the State Review Board. I've been on it for six years. And I'm on the Murphy's Historic Zoning Commission, just like yours. I've been on that for probably 10 or 12 years. But I've been on the State Review Board, and we do review delisting at the end of every session. We do it three times a year, I think. And we review everything that we are going to hopefully approve. And then we have the session where we, I call it the funeral. It's usually for buildings that have burned and they're no longer there, have been torn down, or buildings that have been what we call so remodeled, so modified, that it no longer has its architectural integrity for why it was nominated. As I look at this particular building, to me, the contributing features of the building really are the two facades. You can't really say the roof is, because it was always flat before. And the fact that if you put your back against, on the west side of Second Avenue, looked up and you cannot see it, I, as a member, I'm only one of several people, and there are probably 15 to 20 people, I would vote that it's fine, and I would not recommend to delist this with this addition, proposed addition, because you cannot see it.
When did you say, how often do you meet? I missed that.
I think it's three times a year. We have, I think it's three dates. We just met earlier in the year. It was January, I believe, in Knoxville.
So you don't know when your next meeting is, do you?
You know, it's on my calendar, but I, until they remind me it's coming up, I don't pay a lot of attention to it. I get the big packet of things to review, like you all probably do. And then you gotta hurry up and read them real quick.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that.
Do you ever, that body, does it ever give advisory opinions? Look at something in advance and say, this would be too much, this would not be?
We do not get before the meeting and discuss it. We only get there in the meeting and everybody casts voices their opinion. But we have had buildings that were heavily remodeled, which might be similar to this in that respect, and we have asked that they be delisted, and we have done that. Did I answer your question?
Well, the question was, do you look at something in advance based on plans and say, that would cause a delisting, or that would not cause a delisting?
Well, not every municipality that has a property on the National Register actually has a group such as yourselves to review these things. So things can get modified. And when the State Historic Preservation Officer, the deputy, or their group that makes these nominations goes around to look at the new nominations, they typically like to go by and look at the existing nominations, the existing properties already listed, and they'll see if they've been modified. If they've been modified heavily, then they will come back and they will make attempts to review it and potentially delist it.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more time. My question is, like, have you ever had someone, for one of your meetings, bring in a set of plans and say, this has not been done? And the question is?
No.
Would this cause a delisting?
No, they don't come before us with the plans prior to construction. No.
I guess the only prior is what Robin got from the person she spoke with.
They would probably have the opportunity to come before us, though, but we've never had that done.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming. Is there any other questions for, while you're here? Appreciate it.
Sean, did you have anything?
Just real quick. Our concern regarding the delisting, potential for delisting from the National Register, we just really think it shouldn't be part of this dialogue, number one. Number two, you're correct, it's the zoning ordinance and the historic zoning provisions that guide you, that guide our architect, is what's really controlling here. And all we're talking about is infringing upon that 30-foot area for construction that cannot be seen. That's it. So there's justification here. Every case stands on its own merits, case by case analysis. Not concerned about a precedent here. You have the evidence regarding the elevator shaft. You start with the bones of this building. It is that elevator shaft. That's the artery of this building. And they're simply trying to get that primary residence along that Second Avenue corridor. He could easily try to reverse the construction and try to build a residence out over the First Avenue, take advantage of the stadium view and the river, and turn the back of the house towards Second Avenue, which we don't think is a good result, a good alternative. It's impressive that he wants his master bedroom along Second Avenue, which, as you all know, has become extremely noisy, somewhat problematic. There's been some closures of some businesses as a result of that, so with that, we'll conclude.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Sean. Okay, I'm gonna close public hearing again. Go ahead.
I'm not gonna make any assumptions here, but with them making reference to the core of the building being the elevator shaft, is it gonna be in use? Are they gonna use that? I'm not assuming that that's an answer. It's a question. Will they be using the elevator shaft?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
I concur with Commissioner Cantrell. I think this is a very well-thought-out project. I wish it did meet the setback. However, it does not affect the facades on either street, does not affect the historic nature of the building from the street, and does not upset the street life on Second nor First Avenues. And I think it's a wonderful way to watch a historic building progress rather than be frozen in time. I think it should pass.
Are you ready to, is there some more discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
I just have one question.
No, go ahead.
So I don't disagree that it, I think, goes a long way towards meeting the intent, and it's a good design, and the height and setback requirements, that you use specific figures, that's a should, not a shall, so there's some potential leeway there. The one thing I worry about is the sightline drawing. What happens if, sure, there's a science to it, but what happens if it is visible? I mean, I've seen drawings like that before and then gone out a year later and it was, did not look like that. Not things before us here, but other renderings of other buildings. I mean, is that something that comes back to us and we talk about, well, someone, there's a picture of someone standing on the street and they can see it? Because what we seem to be hanging our hat on, it's not, at least folks that seem to be going towards this is all right, are, seem to be hanging their hat on, it is absolutely not visible. And it might not be.
Seems like that could be handled in a condition of a motion. And thus, it's up to the applicant and the architect to verify and be sure before they build it that it's not gonna be seen.
I like that idea.
Now, yeah, there may be some technicalities of which public right of way, can you see it from Commerce Street, you know, can you see it from, you know, across the river? You are gonna see it.
Across the river, I think you can see almost anything.
Go ahead, Ben.
I had a question for staff on their
I had a question for staff on their, I'm looking through, and you cited particularly item H. I was looking through that and just wanted to understand, you know, we've talked a lot about 30 feet and so on. Is there additional, maybe I wasn't listening well enough earlier, is there additional information? There was some discussion of one, two stories, and can you speak to?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of that question.
This appears to be, it gets a little taller in the middle, and we spent time on 30 feet invisible from the street certainly, as it, the sightlines don't, where it bumps up, don't seem to indicate even that would be visible. Can you speak wholly to the project as a whole, not just the 30-foot setback? Or is it 30-foot setback, would the project be acceptable unless, you know, if the 30-foot setback were observed? That's my question.
There's also the issue of the height. It's 28 feet tall at one point, and the guidelines talk about one story and 15 feet. Which, which together, the setbacks and the height and everything comes together to be the overall massing.
So, along those lines, as I looked, and maybe I hadn't dug deep enough into the analysis, it's a 25-foot wide project or lot or building, and that's, I don't know if it's typical along Second, but certainly a lot of them are narrow, which is delimiting in terms of, you know, depth, you have everything going for you in depth and nothing going for you in width, given that you've got party walls and several of those things going on. So there certainly is some limitations that this project would have, and I think to some other projects like, that we've reviewed on Broadway that are, either they were combined because they're a single building owner now, or other things, and they tend to push, have pushed themselves up towards Broadway, whereas this one doesn't seem to have the benefit of an exposure that allows flexibility, tremendous amount of flexibility. And so, I just, I want to make sure I'm clear in the analysis of this, of what is, what particular objections the staff might have, and also how that relates particularly to the guidelines, and if there are constraints to this project that are unusual to it, or unusual to a typology that may not be present elsewhere, may not be present in other projects that have been, that are objectional, or that have been approved or not approved, for whatever reason.
The guidelines are very specific in this case, in terms of height and width, excuse me, in terms of setback in height. So, we were concerned with if you don't, if you don't agree and you don't think it should follow the guidelines, then that sets us up for rooftop additions all over Second Avenue. And as you know, especially with Broadway right now, rooftop additions are very, very popular. All of the rooftop additions on Broadway, no matter how tall or how wide the building is, follow this requirement, with the exception of one building that wasn't deep enough. And this one goes from street to street.
Any more discussion?
I tend to, I understand staff's concern, I certainly understand their recommendation, given our guidelines. But if there were rooftop additions to every building on Second Avenue that were similar to this, I'm not sure, A, anyone would know, because they're not visible, and B, wouldn't necessarily take away from the, you know, from the character defining features of the district and of this building. So, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the application as submitted, as it meets, I believe, the intent of our guidelines.
Second, are we going to add the addition that the, they make sure it meets the non-visibility part that you'd brought up before?
I was not suggesting that, because as staff said, our guidelines don't specifically say that additions shouldn't be visible.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
But if anyone wants to.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's do hands real quick, all in favors. One, two, three, four. Okay, all opposed? One, two, three. Okay, motion carries.
119 Third Avenue South is an application to erect a projecting sign. The location of the sign is noted with a blue dotted box. Staff is recommending disapproval of the sign because the building is already significantly over its allotment for signage square footage as set forth in the design guidelines. In addition, the proposed new signage size does not meet Section 4 of the design guidelines. In 2013, MHCC staff issued a permit for the painted wall signs on the Third Avenue South facade, which you can see here in the drawing. These signs replace previous painted signs. Staff's approval was based on the prior design guidelines for signage for the district. The new signage guidelines adopted last year set up a calculation for signage square footage allotment. Under the new guidelines, this building is allotted 158 square feet of signage. Currently, the building has 420 square feet of signage. The Johnny Cash Museum sign at the top is 362 square feet, and the Museum Store sign is 58 square feet. Staff finds that any additional signage on this facade would not be in keeping with the design guidelines because the building is already 262 square feet over its signage allotment. This is not a situation where the signage is just a little bit over the allotment. The proposed 36 square feet of new signage would mean that the building would have nearly three times the amount of signage square footage than what is allowed. Here is the proposed sign. The thickness of the sign and its projection from the building also do not meet the design guidelines. The design guidelines state that internally illuminated signs like this one should have a maximum thickness of 1 foot 6 inches. The bulk of the sign is 2 feet thick, and the letters add 10 inches to the sign's width. Therefore, the signage, the sign's maximum width is 16 inches thicker than what is allowed under the design guidelines. In addition, the design guidelines state that the signage should project a maximum of 6 feet from the building. The sign is 6 feet wide and is situated 1 foot from the building, so its maximum projection is 7 feet, which does not meet the design guidelines. Because of the sign's thickness and its projection, staff finds that the sign's size does not meet the design guidelines. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding that the building is already significantly over its allotment for signage square footage as set forth in the design guidelines, and finding that the signage size does not meet Section 4 of the Broadway Design Guidelines. Staff does note that the proposed sign location, height, materials, and illumination do meet the design guidelines, and we offer as a solution that the owner could remove the painted wall signage and alter the size of the projecting sign to bring it into compliance with the design guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks Melissa. Is applicant here and would like to come forward? State your name and address.
I'm not the true applicant, I'm just representing him. My name is Denise Vest, and I am representing Bill Miller as the owner of the Johnny Cash We designed the sign actually in 2011 for him, and his hopes was that just to paint over what was existing, which was the old salvage store, I don't know if anybody remembers it, but, so that's what he had gotten a permit to do at the time, that was within the signage allotment that he was allowed to have, which is why he has a permit for that. He wanted to go ahead and add a projection sign to increase his visibility from Broadway, because as it stands, nobody can find him. Nobody can see where the museum is, and he has a ton of, not only national, but international visitors now. He's won many accolades for the outstanding museum that it is, and will actually increase in size, and he was just wanting to increase his own visibility. And as far as the design goes, all of that is on paper, so it's up for anything. We can change it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the representative of the applicant?
I do, I totally appreciate the problem with the visibility from Broadway and wanting to draw people down that street, and I think that's generally a good thing. Why not? Because the very big sign that is eating your entire allowance doesn't do you any good for that, why not just give that up? And then you can, I think the numbers would, am I right, the numbers would work, that you could have the, the other sign, or something similar to that?
We, we actually have asked, as far as trying to do the full abatement of the paint on the building. And not knowing what the paint was underneath for the salvage store, or prior to that, if any of that is lead-based paint, it's going to be a nightmare. Because lead-based paint, you involve the EPA, as far as removal, you're looking at having to sandblast the brick, which then damages the facade, different things like that. So he's just trying to avoid damaging the brick and different things like that. And as I said, this was permitted, and it was allowable under the old standards.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
Robin, how are you speaking?
Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
Robin, we wouldn't, I mean, as far as removing the large sign all the way across the, with the building, I know painting brick is, you know, but, I mean, we allowed it to be painted in the first place.
It's covering what, a sign that was already there, so it was already painted. But actually, this brick probably isn't the very original, original brick, it's not as soft, it's not as old. And they, there was a sign painted on the rear that didn't meet the guidelines, so they didn't get a permit for, and we allowed them just to paint that out. They didn't have to remove the paint, they just painted the brick the same color, painted the mortar back the same color as it was, and it looks great, and they did a really good job with that. So there, there are other options.
So, so, I mean, we could, I mean, we could, that would be a recommendation for us to be able to approve a revised sign that meet the sign.
There are also chemical peels that are used for removing paint, that, you know, whether it's lead-based or not, it wouldn't matter. So there are different ways, there's more ways to remove paint than sandblasting.
Okay. But, but, I mean, if in fact they chose to use paint as the option, we would, we likely would allow that.
Yes.
All right.
Robin, there's a, is this another building, or just another entrance or exit, where there's a kind of a, opposite the entry, where it says Museum Store, the painted sign there, there's another box? Was that a, a sign of some sort at that location?
I'm not sure I'm following you.
Little red line?
Small little, there's a black line, I guess, to the left, yeah, there.
Oh, yes, that used to be a sign.
Okay.
Prior to this use.
Dare I ask if that is an acceptable treatment to not over, going over your signage allowance?
It would not be with these current design guidelines now.
Okay. Did I hear you say earlier that the request to, or in the application, was there a discussion about reducing the amount of the overall sign at the top as, as an option?
Yes, I mean, we, you know, agree with the representative, it seems to make sense that the best use of any signage would be a projecting sign. This one, the rooftop, is really only seen if you are standing across the street and happen to look sideways and look up. So yeah, that was our first recommendation, was just to remove that sign.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application, subject to the condition that the large overhead sign is removed in some satisfaction, in some manner satisfactory to staff, and that the projection sign, as it relates to the thickness and the extent of the projections, both of which are close to the guidelines but not quite there, are revised to, to meet the guidelines by staff.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Robin, there was a councilperson that was looking, is he, I didn't know if he wanted to say anything or not. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was waiting for, I was waiting for a break.
I think he's talking to someone.
Yeah, I was waiting for a break to see, once, is he gone?
I think he was voting.
Sean, why don't you go ahead and then if we need to.
I'll certainly stop if a councilperson shows up. Maybe they were just here to vote.
Yeah, they, I didn't know if he wanted to speak on it, but he left. Okay, thank you.
This next application is 2615 Barton Avenue in Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The existing building you see here is a historic house, it's a one and a half story Tudor Revival House, constructed primarily of brick with stucco and half timbering in the gable fields. And the application today is proposing to enlarge the house with a rear addition and to construct a new outbuilding. The addition will be wider than the historic house on both sides. On the left, it will sit in from the sides of the existing house with an alcove, and then step out into the side yard. And this component that steps out to the left will be shorter than the house, complementing the massing of the historic house with corresponding eve and foundation heights, and matching the roof pitch. And staff finds the height and scale of this portion of the addition to be compatible with the character of the house and to be appropriate. The addition then extends across the back of the house, on the upper story with dormers, with a shed and gable roof. And that portion sits in from the silhouette of the house, and is appropriate. And then, on the first story, on the right side of the house, the addition has a port cochere that extends also out beyond the outside edge of the house. This port cochere does not meet the, or would not meet the standard five-foot setback buffer, so the applicant is requesting an approval of a shorter three-foot setback to accommodate that port cochere. The commission has found that it can be appropriate for an addition to be wider than a house, where it maintains the rhythm of the street, but it is generally not appropriate for additions to be wider on both sides. The distances between the adjacent houses on this street are such that the addition to the left would have less impact on the established rhythm of the street, or perhaps that the, it would have an impact, but it would not be adverse. But the port cochere on the right side, as you can see there, staff feels that it would disrupt the rhythm of spacing on the street because there's a short distance relatively between that house and the one to the right. And for those reasons, staff finds that the port cochere and the three-foot side setback on the right would not meet the design guidelines. The exterior materials of the addition are typical and appropriate for new construction. The windows and doors will be wood, and staff asks to review their specific selections prior to installation. And the plans also show that some windows on the right side of the historic house will be replaced with different sized windows, and that the original front chimney would be removed. Staff finds that the removal of the chimney and alteration of original window sizes, original window openings is not appropriate. The stat, the application also includes the construction of a one and a half story two-car garage at the rear of the lot. Staff finds that the height and scale are appropriate, but that the proposal doesn't meet the 20-foot required setback that bulk zoning regulations would require. However, because outbuildings were historically very close to a rear alley, staff finds that the requested 10-foot rear setback is appropriate for the outbuilding. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed addition and outbuilding, with conditions that the original front chimney is retained, that the existing window openings are not resized, and that the port cochere is eliminated from the proposal. And finally, are not resized, and that the port cochere is eliminated from the proposal. And finally, the selection of windows and doors to be approved by staff. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that this proposal meets the design guidelines for the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Thanks, Sean. Any questions for staff?
Sean, you're mentioning that this particular project is a little wider than most projects. Is that correct? The addition is?
It's wider than the existing structure. The lot, I believe, is 75 feet wide, and that house currently is 40. I have the drawing, Sarah. I can look up exactly if you'd like, but.
So I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand, that that is not like, that's not unusual for rhythm of this, rhythm of the street?
It's not the most common type of addition that we would prove or form, but the guidelines do allow for additions to be wider in a couple of situations. One would be if the house is shifted to one side of the lot, or if the lot is significantly wider than the average of other lots in the street. And staff felt that this, this lot, you can see the house to the left there in that image, that house is on a double lot, or roughly it's a 100-foot wide lot. So the rhythm of the street is not 100% uniform for every, so there actually is the possibility or the potential to expand into that side yard on the left side without disrupting the rhythm of the street.
Also my comment on the way you're presenting, it's really helpful to have that highlight. Just so you know, that's a, that's really a helpful vision.
I'll, when time allows, I will try to do that, but no guarantees.
And you're comfortable with it being wider on both sides, not just the one on the left?
No, the addition to the left side sticks out, I think, six feet beyond the left side of the existing house. To the right, the port cochere would go out 12 feet beyond the right side of the house and into the setback. There's a required five-foot setback on either side, and the addition would meet the left but not the right. So because, because it doesn't meet the setbacks, because it's 12 feet wider than the house, and because the distance between this house and the one to the right is pretty narrow, we felt that adding to the left side only was appropriate.
Sean, what does, the port cochere, you said, sticks out 12 feet, it goes into the five-foot setback, so how far into that setback? Did you tell me it left three feet?
Yeah, I believe it goes two feet into the setback.
Okay, and how wide is the drive? Nine? Or does the driveway count towards the setback at all?
No, the driveway, it would be the footprint or the, essentially the footer. There's a pier at the, at the corner of the outer edge of the port cochere, and that's what's in the setback buffer.
Okay.
The driveway itself would be all right.
What I was getting at is the existing drive, I'm assuming it's about nine feet wide?
Yeah, that's probably about right.
And does that count as going in or out of the setback?
No, it wouldn't, because it's not covered. If there's a covered, and I verified this with codes, they said that carport, port cochere, whatever you want to call it, if it, if it's an extension from the house and it has a cover, then it counts as part of the house.
Okay, okay.
Hi, any other questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here?
The applicant is here too.
Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and, so we can find this project?
Hi, my name is Blaine Bonadis. I live at 1606 Linden Avenue. I'm the architect on the project. I'd like to hand you all a couple handouts. We met with staff prior to our submission, and we were, felt like we were encouraged that the port cochere wouldn't be an issue, particularly because it is so far up the driveway. The elevation is probably more than 16 feet or so above the sidewalk. It is to the rear of the lot. It is also not a solid mass. It's open to the weather, so you can see right through it. So we felt like the visual impact was really made much less significant. In addition, as you can tell, this house is very tall and sits high on that lot. We reduced the pitch of the roof so that it really sort of minimized the visual impact from the street. We did speak with the neighbor. The neighbor has no objection. The way that it happens to be laying out on the site is that it is opposite the neighbor's garage, so really there's no sort of impact as far as visually to the main structure of the house to the right of us, which is what would impact the most, so that essentially the garages or the car parking portions of each of those lot are adjacent to one another. In a larger sense, from a design perspective, there's program requirements to get a screen porch, a master bedroom, a kitchen of today's size, et cetera. And what I was trying to avoid from an architectural standpoint was what I refer to as the bus effect. When you have to take this addition and squeeze it back behind a house that's already kind of shoved over to one side, you end up with these big, long additions that sort of go on and on and on. And I think just allowing us that little bit of room to grow left and right enables us to pull that footprint out of the backyard, which, if you can maybe see from the satellite, but of course I have a survey here too, it's a significant grade change from the sidewalk, which is the front, to the rear. So every foot we go in that backyard, we're, you know, digging out a significant amount of material. This port cochere is not meant to drive through. It's simply going to be drive up to and then back down. And that driveway as exists today is about nine feet, nine feet wide, so it's pretty small and, you know, difficult to negotiate. So I think it'll give us a little bit of relief once we reach the top of that drive to get in and out of the car. And one last point is that we have a, about a 16-foot grade change from finished floor of the front porch to the sidewalk. And this enables us to enter and exit the rear, which is a lot more practical, particularly if you have groceries or kids or older folks. And it gives them a way in and a way out. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Blaine. Any questions for applicants?
Just one. Are you generally okay with the other conditions that staff came up with?
We'll totally concede on the, on the chimney, as practical as it might, might seem. The windows, I think, my understanding was that if it's not on the front, and it was appropriate, which certainly it's going to be, you know, I think in the past I've established good faith that these things will look proportionally correct and appropriate. And brick openings, so it's easily disguised, if you will. I would push for that, but certainly would concede that if you would consider other things in our favor.
Thank you.
The owner's here too, does he?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Hello, my name is Randy Michaels. My wife and I are the homeowners, and I just wanted to express our thoughts behind why the port cochere in particular is so important to us. We have lived in Hillsborough Village for 12 years. We lived on Westwood Avenue. So we, we love the neighborhood. We're very excited about this, our new home. But we're also familiar with some of the nuances and quirks of living, living in the neighborhood, one of which that we learned very early on about living in Nashville. It's just, it rains a lot, and so we run a lot between, you know, from the car to the front of the house, and that used to be not an issue for us. Well, we have a three-year-old, we have one on the way. The port cochere is very important for us as a family in order to be able to get our kids in and out of the car without, you know, getting them drenched in the process. We also have aging parents. My mother-in-law's had both her hips replaced and her knee replaced, getting her in and out of the car. It can be a challenge sometimes. If we have the port cochere, it just gives us another layer of protection in order to make that process safe. My wife and I are designing this house to be the house that we'll live in forever. This is our forever home, and we're trying to project in the future, you know, the needs that we'll have and recognizing the problems that our parents have already. We know that at some point in our lives that it's going to be an issue as well for us. Therefore, you know, we strongly urge you to please consider approving the addition of the port cochere.
Thank you. Any questions for the homeowner? Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project in the audience? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing, discussion?
I just have one question for staff. Well, I guess one comment and one question. The comment is, I think, I like all the recommendations and the conditions of staff here, though I am pretty comfortable with the port cochere considering how far back it is. That doesn't give me much heartburn. But I wanted you to, I'd forgotten about this. I wanted you to talk about the front stoop, that it goes from six to 22 feet. I don't remember seeing us approve anything like that before, just because it's on the face of the house.
Yeah, staff, actually, we had some pretty lengthy discussion about this. You can see, there's a lot of glare. It's kind of wiped out in the photo, but hopefully you can see. The current stoop, and maybe actually the architect could speak to this too if you need, but it's maybe four and a half, four feet deep and five feet wide, with pretty significant brick cheek walls on either side. So the actual landing itself is probably not much more than three by three. So with the, you know, the understanding that widening of that would make it more safer and usable, but of course that it's not going to be covered, and with the materials to be used matching the brick and stone of the existing, it seemed like it wasn't significantly adverse. Yeah, the size going from, from seven or eight to 22 certainly sounds like a lot, but it certainly was a logical place where they were going with the extension to fit kind of within the windows rather than picking a random place. It might have been smaller, but looked a little bit off.
Okay, thanks. All right.
I just want to make a comment that I think that heartburn comment, observation by you, Erin, should become a binding guideline. If it doesn't give you heartburn, that's a good deal. I like that. I agree. I'm especially moved by the port cochere argument. Probably being the only aged person on this commission, I really appreciate that. No, trust me. I'm the only real aged person up here. But, and I appreciate your, your thinking of those things, and it's smart of you to think about it being a concern that you will have sometime. That's smart. And I'm like you, it doesn't give me any heartburn on the port cochere.
Any more comments?
May I make a request, if you don't mind?
Yes.
The port cochere intrudes on the right setback. And a few years ago, you gave us guidance on when those setback determinations would be appropriate. And so we just want to make sure that we're giving applicants the best guidance. If you find this setback reduction to be appropriate, could you give us guidance on why, so we can give good guidance to applicants in the future?
Sure.
Why did we approve it then? What was the approval then? What was the guidelines on that?
If someone needed a setback reduction, it would be in the case of the shape of a lot, maybe that there's no alley access, proximity of adjoining structures, unusual property lines, things like that.
Yeah, I'm going against what everybody else believes. But, I mean, I do think that granting the extension on both sides is setting a precedent in this area when there's a deep enough backyard that the drop area could be at the back of the house. So I'm not as comfortable with that as you all are.
I do have another question to that, Commissioner. So is the five-foot setback, is that base zoning or is that our, the guideline? So that's base zoning?
It's base zoning, and then you have the ability to set the setbacks. And in determining when, how those would be appropriate, you came up with that, this policy a few years ago.
I think that this project maintains historical character of the home, and I also think that the port cochere is a wonderful architectural addition, not only to the house but also to the street. And two feet inside of a setback, I have to agree with Erin. I have no pause whatsoever.
I didn't say I didn't have any pause. I mean, I think there's something, there are some attributes to this particular one that I think are important. One is that it's, it's well past the midpoint of the home with the, the main ridge, the original ridge of the home, that it's see-through, and it is, the massing is reduced quite a bit by that. And those are the two most important things to me. And also with the third factor, perhaps less important, that it's up the hill, as the applicant pointed out, that it is probably not going to be very easily perceived from the street. And then fourth as well, that it sounds like the neighbor is not upset about how close it is to them, and given that the neighbor's property isn't already pushed up against the property line, it seems to still work with the rhythm. So there's a number of things that I think make this not a unique case, but a, the exception to the rule that you shouldn't go out both sides. I generally agree with that, except I don't think there's really going out both sides, more like one and a half than two, in my mind.
Have we answered the question about setbacks? Reposing the question.
Is there, is there, to go from five to three in this case, giving the staff the guidance in, or is this, is this more unique than, or is it, that would be the, in this case, the reason to grant that?
Yeah, Robin, what I just described is at least my, my reasoning for it, and with in mind that it's the exception to the rule. Is that enough guidance for you, or are you thinking there's, there's 50 of them just like that that we've disapproved?
I know we've had other port cocheres that are setback to the midpoint, and, you know, by the nature of port cochere, it is open, that it encroach on the setback that we have disapproved, and one that the commission did approve, and the neighborhood was very upset about, not just the property owner next door, but others. So, and we, we just want to be sure we're giving applicants the absolute best guidance so that when they walk in here, there, there's no surprises, and we haven't steered them one direction away from something they wanted or steered them towards something that they can't have. We just want to give them clear direction.
Well, and I think that's where we need to conclude in our motion, why this is an exception to what we've sort of established as our practice in our motion, so that we don't set a precedent.
I wanted to ask staff if, if the port cochere did not exceed the side setback, would your recommendation still be to remove the port cochere, or is it just a setback encroachment issue?
Initially, it was both. I mean, you've laid out arguments why both sides might be appropriate. We have some pretty clear direction on setback reductions, though, and we just want to be sure we're telling people the right things.
Well, I guess that's what I was going to get to, is, I know it's tight, but, but are there any other ways that, that you could get, and I guess I'm asking the applicant, any other ways that you could achieve what the client's looking to achieve and stay within the five-foot setback? For example, taking the port cochere a little further back, beyond the edge of the house, so you have house, so you have a little more width there. I know it slopes, but it looks, at least by the plans here, that there's somewhat of a flatter.
We're trying to integrate the portico share into the rear screen porch.
Right.
So that it's, again, not this kind of bus effect where you have these continual masses that encroach on the backyard.
And I think what I'm suggesting is actually extend it further back, so it still connects to the porch where it currently exists. So it'd be a deeper portico share, but it would give you the room that you would need. I mean, you're about as narrow as you can get and still be able to open doors where you are currently.
Yeah.
But if you extended that a little further back, you would be able to open doors, but still pass by without necessarily getting into the setback.
Well, I think what we could do is we could probably reduce the cheek wall there that holds up the columns, and we can get rid of that issue, open the doors, and still get our coverage. We are really at a minimum as far as making that functional, so that's why we're asking for that additional two feet. You know, the other thing we could do is reduce the size of the columns, but then it sort of becomes inappropriate when you have this, you know, thin spindly columns out there which are out of character of the house. So we feel like we're kind of maxed out as far as being able to make it accomplished. Furthermore, I think that I've been before this board many times where we've asked for three-foot setbacks for garages that are in the rear of the lot. And under those circumstances, because we've asked for that reduction, you know, there hasn't been a whole lot of objection. And so my thought is that this isn't even a garage. I mean, it's a portico share, it's less mass, less visually impactful. So if you can approve a garage that's two stories at three foot, I don't see why, and that's the guidance that I've been getting in the past.
I can clarify that if you wish. Garages are at the back of the lot, and historically, they were usually close to property lines and alleys. So we were looking at that as a completely different situation.
Thanks, Rob. Okay. Any more discussion, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve staff recommendations not including the portico share.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Sorry.
Kind of, what is it?
Just for clarification, I assume that recommendation is also, or that motion is to approve a reduced setback?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't think we have to amend it, just that's part of it. That's, well, it's part of, it's assumed because of that. Correct?
Did we get enough instructions from the staff, so when we make this motion, we're making it really clear why we're making the exception?
I don't think, probably, not sure, I don't think.
I mean, is that what you're asking, Rob?
I would say I'm still confused on how to direct applicants, but we can talk about it later and finish this motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. I'm forgetting hands, I just want to make sure I got everybody. One more time, I'm sorry. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all opposed?
Motion.
Okay, motion carries. Madam Vice Chair, I'm going to have to excuse myself and pass the gavel, pass the gavel to you.
245 Lauderdale Road is an application for a rear addition and a front addition, which is the extension of the front dormer. The applicant also requests partial demolition of a rear bay and porch and the existing front dormer for his project. The addition will inset two feet on the right and approximately 15 feet on the left side. It will be brick on the first story and hardy board siding on the second story. The rear addition will be compatible with this and other surrounding historic buildings and meets the applicable design guidelines. Partial demolition of this bay and second-story porch and the deck, of course, meet the guidelines for appropriate demolition. The dormer outlined here in red, the applicant proposes to extend this dormer approximately two feet to meet the roofline to correct water intrusion around it. Staff recommends extending the dormer only halfway forward to the roofline, so that it will continue to read as a recessed dormer. In addition, the window can be shortened. These two alterations will allow for the slope of the dormer floor to be increased, allowing for proper drainage and retention of the scale of the original recessed design. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the additions with the conditions that staff have final review of windows, doors, garage doors, skylights, and materials for the porch and dormer, that the dormer be reconstructed in a similar design but extended only halfway forward and with the window slightly shortened, and to have approval of the HVAC unit. With these conditions, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines and...
You're here for this, right, Jim?
Yeah, the applicant is here for this proposal.
Elizabeth Parrott, 5707 Tennessee Avenue. I am Mr. Grissom's attorney, the owner of 245 Lauderdale. Unfortunately, he could not be here today due to a legal matter in Cookeville. We have reviewed the staff recommendations to the plan and agree with the majority of them. The only recommendation that is still in contention from our side is the dormer window. The current dormer meets the Section 2B2 requirements for appropriate demolition. However, we feel the recommendations are not adequate to fix the issue that has plagued the house ever since he bought it in 1996. He has spent approximately $11,000 already trying to repair water damage from the current dormer and the way it sits. He's had two expert roofing contractors try and fix the issue with no luck because it is a design defect. Currently, there's eight water intrusion sites, and in their plans, the homeowner and Mr. Thompson, his architect, have created a change that would bring the dormer out 24 inches to be flush with the front of the house, which would create only one water intrusion site. And due to the current design defect, he's lost the use and enjoyment of his home, particularly that room due to the chronic leaking. And Mr. Thompson, when he comes up, will show that the bringing out of the dormer to the edge roof is still historically in keeping with the neighborhood in style. There's only one other house in this area that has a recessed dormer, and so they are both design defects and not the standard. This will not significantly cause anything to be significantly adverse to the current historical style and look of the house. And just to be a little demonstration, the current dormer sits back this far. They want to bring it flush. What the staff is recommending, if I can make this work, is to bring it this short and bring it up and shorten the window. That is still going to be a significant hardship. There's still eight water intrusion points with that area, and it's going to cause an economic hardship on the owner, because if the water issues can't be fixed, you still have eight intrusions that could potentially leak. And I'm going to bring Jim Thompson up, he's the architect who can give you any additional comments and answer any questions on the specifics of the dormer window. As we said, we agree with all the other recommendations, and we'll take those.
Hi, good afternoon again. Jim Thompson, 2302 Hillmead Drive. I've known Jeff, Mr. Grissom, for about 14 years, and ever since I've known him, that window has leaked. He's spent a lot of money trying to get it fixed, and when Liz talks about the fact there's eight points, there's actually like eight joints, the plane changes. And so the two sides of the well creates three each, so that's six. There with the window then joins the flat part of the roof. And actually, it might tilt a little bit toward the inside of the house and not out. It's pretty darn level, if not a little bit back toward the house. And then there's the other plane, so there's that, from the well to the slope of the roof. And what Liz was trying to say is that we're not trying to bring the face of the dormer out to the face of the facade below the first floor, we're just trying to have it cover the two-foot space that's there that's flat in front of it, where the leaks are obviously coming from. He's torn out the plaster ceilings of both his dining room, his entry, and his living room, trying to find it. The plaster all around it is damaged, the floors are stained, and he just is not comfortable having anybody over. He typically meets me at the front door if we go out to eat, and won't let me in there. So it is a hardship to him because of the design, what he feels like is a design flaw originally. There is one other that I've measured, counted, going from his house to West End Avenue that has the same thing, and I would love to have knocked on their door and asked, "Do you have leaks in your roof at that dormer too?", just to see. But we didn't, I didn't do that. But I think the issue is just simply is that it's certainly affecting his quality of life and his building and his house, and he feels like that if, although he appreciates the help that the staff has given greatly on this and through this process, he feels like just moving it halfway is not going to solve the problem, and you'll still have eight plane changes in that well that are avenues for leaks if he can't find somebody to do it. Now, as architects, we know that it's just flashing problems, but if you can't get somebody to flash it properly, it's not going to do you any good. Right now, the window that's in there that he wants to bring forward and reuse, it only sits up above that flat roof about four inches. And if we can't, the flat part of the roof, the well up, to get the water to run down quicker and not sit there, you've got to then reduce the window height. The Secretary of the Interior Standards takes a very strong position about changing the window size. In fact, all these windows have been changed, probably in the '70s, they're metal-clad wood windows, and they're not original, they would have been double-hung windows. So, and in addition to that, that dormer, probably in the '70s when they replaced the windows, was covered with plywood. So what you have original that you see on the outside is the roof structure that's got new shingles on it. You see new wood siding that's plywood, and you see a new window replacement, albeit from the '70s. It doesn't have a 50-year age on it in its current condition. So we'd like to just ask, and Mr. Grissom would like to ask, that you consider in lieu of the recommendation of staff, that they move it out to where the face of the dormer would meet the roof plane of the main roof and cover that particular design flaw. In addition, he wants to spend a lot of money to add to the structure and to maintain its integrity, and that's what we're all about here, is maintaining historic structures. And right now, he doesn't even know if the deterioration, till he gets into that, is it rotting the wood? It's been going on for, at least as long as I've known him, for 14 years. So we'd like to fix the problem by moving it out, and we just don't think the cumulative effect of this change, we think actually the change suggested by staff, the cumulative effect for that is greater than what we're asking for, because you've got to camp the flat part, and you've got to reduce the window height. This just simply moves it out two feet. We reuse the window, we side it the same way, the roof will be extended out to look just like it does now, it's just going to be two feet deeper. And that's what we're requesting. Thank you.
If not, we'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
I'm so visual here, and there's a picture in our handout. So can staff kind of tell, show us where, they're asking how far that dormer needs to come out, or they're asking, they're requesting, yes, how far to the front?
Can I come forward?
Well, I think they stated halfway.
Well, I mean, just where is it right there on that picture?
The seal of where this front wall is, is two feet back from this horizontal line there. You see that triangular shape there? The bottom of that triangle is two feet deep, and it's pretty much level, if not leaning back toward the building. So that's one of the planes. But from this line, which is the edge of the roof, he wants to bring this facade and that roof, bring it forward to that line, then you have just one joint, as you do in a normal dormer, there's just one plane change there. Now you've got eight plane changes with that well.
Thank you.
Okay. Ben, did you have something? Any further discussion?
I did, I wanted to make sure I'm clear with the staff in terms of any change in whether halfway is, how different halfway is from all the way, in the staff's analysis of this particular, this particular issue, in that it appears from the applicant's description that in fact, the dormer, the face of the dormer, the bearing height remains the same, it just moves streetward two feet. And the net effect of that is creating, in the third dimension, a larger triangular section on either side, a little bit more roof to the dormer. Is that, that's a correct read of the discussion or the finer points of this particular argument?
Right, it's really just changing the look of the dormer from a recessed dormer to a more traditional dormer.
Okay.
Okay.
Is, in moving it out, we're talking about, from where it is now, two feet out all the way with no horizontal flashing, necessarily vertical and up the side, where's the midpoint again? Where is staff permitting, or what are you more okay with than two feet?
Well, it's about two feet, Jim, is that right, currently to that edge, that horizontal edge that he was pointing to? But, you know, I don't know that we would specifically hold a tape measure up to it, to one foot, but I think our, I think staff's contention on this is that it continued to read as a recessed dormer. I think that's the crux of our stance on it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. There's no other discussion, and we can entertain a motion from someone?
This, I'm sorry, this seems to all have to do with water damage. Is this the real solution to the water damage? Or, I mean, for lack of a better term, shouldn't we be, shouldn't the applicant or the owner of the house be digging a little bit deeper to find his problem? Or are we just putting a Band-Aid here? Somebody that knows more about architecture than me?
I don't know if that was a rhetorical question or not, but I'll give you my perspective. I mean, just because it's historic doesn't mean it was great design. And I'm not sure this recessed dormer is, has been repeated much throughout history. And, you know, there's a reason. Water. And so, you know, you know, this one's tough, because it seems sort of nitpicky to a great degree, and it seems like a good solution that would generally preserve the overall character of this house, and hardly anyone would ever notice. At the same time, you understand the staff's perspective and understand why they've made this recommendation, because it's a character-defining element of the building, whether it was a good idea or not. So.
I think the other comment too, that is, we do review these projects specific to that house, that location, that design, and it seems logical that because the owner is having these issues, and was it original? Was that dormer originally recessed?
Certainly was, or is it a stretch?
And I think that's why staff wants to maintain that recessed design. However, in this particular instance, it seems reasonable that the owner has lived there for so long and has tried to repair it, Commissioner Sam, tried to repair it, and if there are any other options, and water damage is a demon. It flows, and we don't know where it comes from, and that's just, I've been there before. But, so if there is a creative way and still maintain the intent of that building, then it seems reasonable that this request would be in line with logic.
Do you mean the request of staff, their compromise, or just bring it all the way forward?
As, what I'm hearing the applicant to say is to bring it to the very end. As, what I'm hearing the applicant to say is to bring it to the very edge. It's still a dormer. They're still maintaining the same window height. It doesn't seem to me of great change of the design of that area.
Are you prepared to make a motion?
I just want to say, well, I'm kind of coming at it a little differently because I think the fact that it is recessed is a fairly unique aspect that you don't see a whole lot. So if there is a way to preserve some, some portion of that, I think it sounds like a good idea. I think what staff is proposing, my question is probably to Hunter and Ben, in appreciating that people might not be doing them now for a reason, does what staff, staff's proposal, does that sound like something from a design perspective that would work, assuming that the flashing is done correctly? And is it really just, you've just got to get that slope, and then everything ought to be fine? Is that right?
Horizontal surfaces that then transition to, you know, where two materials come together is, that's where you earn your money as both builder and architect and homeowner. So, and so I think to, as commissioners, and certainly to the staff, I think choices are, water is a problem, and we're looking for a solution to fix that. If you shorten the window and maintain somewhat of a setback, how different does that look or feel in terms of the roof line? And there's some changes that, there are some planar changes there that certainly make this look different than it looks now as a solution. Is that better or the same, or not as good as bringing it out? I think if there is a change, it's up to us to make some interpretation or judgment as to, is one better than the other, and is it more in keeping with this character-defining piece? That is my opinion or my read on the guidelines, in that the water certainly causes a problem. I think Hunter stated it well. Because it was done, might make it historic, but not necessarily good in terms of good design practice. So, I think I veered from answering that question, but I'm sorry.
I guess I'd like to.
There's two questions. First, which one, which one is more in keeping with the guidelines? Bringing it all the way forward or staff's compromise? And only if the answer is the latter, then is it, from a design perspective, a good solution? So I think you need to answer yes to, or compromise and yes to even get to what staff is saying. And I guess I still don't know if that's right.
Well, I think staff's recommendation could reduce the problem to some degree, or the potential for problems to some degree. But if I were the homeowner, I can understand their objection to just moving it one foot and still having real potential problems there. I guess if staff's not opposed to shortening the window, one question perhaps for the architect would be, and maybe for staff, too, but have you looked at just simply changing the size of the window and putting a little, you know, copper roof or something up there that pitches it, all water just goes out to the roof and the impact that that would have?
We did discuss all those issues. The concern was is that to get the water off that flat area, we would have to pitch it a reasonable amount of slope to get it out, but the window would get so small. Because you only have the four inches, the bottom trim of the window, sitting on the wood now, so there's only four inches. And so we would have to get a reasonable distance and make that window so much shorter it would look like a porthole up there. And just the Secretary of the Interior Standards really has strong opinions about changing windows, especially sizes and shapes. They would never have approved him changing these windows to casements. They were double-hung. So we would like to maintain that window size and simply bring it forward. I don't think shortening the window and turning it into a much smaller window, I think that's going to be more obvious with the change in the flat part to being sloped, if you can see it from the road then, which is not that far away.
Do you need that much slope? I mean, to me, if you've got, it's two feet setback, and you've got four inches, an inch per foot ought to give you plenty of slope.
A minimum flashing for that window to turn up should be six inches before you get to the sill.
Just for two feet?
Well, if you're, if you come up, let's just say the roof's flat and it remains flat. I would not draw or design or recommend anything less than the flashing turning up six inches before it turns under the actual window sill. So.
So it necessarily means the window needs to shrink?
Good practice, you're already giving up six inches if it's, if you just take what's there today and don't move it anywhere. Good practice would say, move that window sill up six inches. And as you move out and start to cant that roof, you know, that's where the math comes in. Again, that's an opinion of good design for windows.
But I think your point is that, you know, you probably only need a couple of inches of slope in order to get the water off of there. And so, you know, that would, you know, you might take six inches off. I'm curious if just taking six inches off the height of that window would solve it.
You know, I think six plus the additional inches for raising that flat part. So I think we're talking probably like eight or more to do it. And you just simply want to do it once correctly and fix it. You don't want to have to come back here if we move it, you know, halfway, and then, hey, we just spent $10,000 extending it. Now we've got to ask you to approve it again, to send it out another 10, another 12 inches to try to solve the problem. So we're just trying to get it done once. And we really think the cumulative effect of the recommendation is a bigger impact than moving it out two feet. I don't think anybody driving by would even notice it. Because we're re-signing it the same way, we're reusing that same window.
And it still basically is historic-looking. That's your point a long time ago. I just, I don't see any problem in bringing it out where it needs to go because it still looks like it ought to in this historic district. I understand exactly what staff is doing. They're trying to preserve a historical characteristic, but it is, it was a problem designed back in history there, apparently. So I think bringing the thing out and doing it right is the best way to go. Just my opinion. That's my motion.
Might I ask one clarification question? Will we need?
Don't get technical on me. Done the best I can here.
We have a motion?
Could the motion be repeated?
Dare you? From the law here. Okay. All right. With respect to the application at 245 Lauderdale Road, am I on the right one? All right. I move to approve the application, subject to staff recommendations, with the exception that the, of the dormer. And that the dormer not be allowed to come out consistent with what the architect has said here in this room and just brought out. That's as good as I'm going to do with that motion, sorry.
All right. We have a motion for 245 Lauderdale to adopt staff recommendation with the exception of the dormer reconstruction, but it be approved as submitted. Is that, I'm repeating.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am, second.
We have a second. Okay. Discussion.
My, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay. Sure.
Just to clarify, if we bring it out, once you, we're taking the face forward, the window is the same height, will there be adequate room to flash the window?
We feel like that we can, we can work with the flashing because you'll go up and you'll get under the window, framing the trim, and you'll be able to slope down the roof with it. We think that we can.
Very well.
All right. We have, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. 3616 Westbrook.
3616 Westbrook Avenue is an application for a rear addition with an attached garage to this historic bungalow in the Richland-West End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay. The addition has appropriate insets to distinguish it from the existing house. The foundation will match that of the existing house. The addition does have a maximum ridge height that is three feet taller than the ridge of the house, as it does not reach this height until more than 60 feet from the front wall of the house. And because the visibility of the taller portion of the addition will be mitigated with a side cable.
Excuse me, Paul. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to ask the other commissioners, I know we've got one commissioner that's going to be leaving around 4:30. Is everyone else able to stay?
Yes.
15 till 5?
We will if I leave.
And you leave, yeah.
I can actually stay till 4:40 at the very latest if that'll help.
So we're all sort of in the same boat.
Okay. Well, you're leaving. Well, I was going to say, let's get the show on the road.
I can tighten this one up, Commissioner. This one's fairly straightforward.
Do as much as we can. Okay. Okay.
The project meets guidelines for materials, roof shape, proportion, rhythm of openings, and outbuildings. This view shows the nonhistoric addition in metal stairs that will be removed. The partial demolition meets guidelines for appropriate demolition. It meets design guidelines for setback. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the condition of final approval of a brick sample, windows, doors, and garage doors, and approval of utility location, finding that the project meets design guidelines.
We're trying to decide what we're going to do. All right. This item is open for public hearing. Is there property on here?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to address this to the commission? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open it for discussion.
Move approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. 1318 through 1326 Sixth Avenue North.
Chairman, may I ask that we, since seeing that there are some people here who I'm not sure are all applicants, if any of the cases coming up have anyone from the public who wishes to speak, maybe we can move those up.
Okay. All right. Well, is there anyone here on the 1318, 1326 Sixth Avenue North? Raise your hand.
Who's the applicant?
The applicant? Okay. We will do that. Okay. 1807 Fourth Avenue North?
Appt.
Okay. All right. 3501 Byron? 1107 Lillian?
1314 is your applicant.
Well, the 1314, we did at the very beginning of the.
Also.
You're done. You're finished. Okay. 1107 Lillian?
Representing the.
Okay. All right. 2004 Linden?
Off the agenda.
Do I?
Off the agenda.
Off of the agenda?
Off.
Okay. Highway 100? Okay. All right. Well, let's move forward.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
This is a project that includes multiple components, including renovations and new construction. The two historic buildings on the property will be restored to an earlier condition. More recent additions will be removed and replaced with new additions. All the actions meet the design guidelines. It includes a mixed-use structure with 3,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor and three one-bedroom, 900-square-foot flats on the second floor that will be located between the two historic buildings. Guideline 2.2.3 states that porches should also maintain existing setbacks. So staff recommends that the depth of the balconies be shortened so that they do not protrude beyond the porch on the left historic building, or the entire wall or building could also be set back. There'll be a central courtyard with a new eight-unit, single-family townhouse on the alley that also meets the design guidelines. The building, the alley building is a total of four stories, and I'd like to explain it just a little bit. It includes a basement level that's only visible from the rear of the development and a setback partial upper level. In this case, the development takes advantage of a drop in grade to add a basement level that will only be visible from the rear of the development. The uppermost level is partial, is a partial level. The building backs up to a lot that does not have a contributing building. To one side is the greater massing of Warden Bag. On the opposite side is a parking lot. The massing is further broken with multiple vertical elevations. With all these conditions, staff found the massing to be appropriate. And finally, the project includes the redesign of an existing surface parking area. So staff recommends approval with the conditions that final materials be approved by staff. All windows and doors are recessed a minimum of two inches from the brick walls. The front balconies of building N1 do not extend beyond the porch of E1. Staff provide final review of mortar types, color, and texture for repointing. Staff provide final review of exterior lighting, and applicants submit a new permit application for any signage. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet the applicable design guidelines for the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. And do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Any other questions? Robin, is there a height guideline for Germantown?
It varies depending on where the project is in the district. And this one's in the National Register area, which usually has a requirement of 35 feet. However, this is backing up to an area that will be non-contributing because there's nothing back there, and the parking lot, and Warden Bag. So it's a little bit different than if you were right in the interior of the district. So the design guidelines have a lot of different guidance for height, just because this district is so eclectic. It's got industrial areas, it's got residential areas, it's got Warden Bag. So there isn't just one set height that's really appropriate for the whole district.
Case-specific, then, is what you're saying. Thank you. Okay.
Robin, one more quick thing. What I'm seeing is the balcony on building N1, it seems to be protruding past E1 on this diagram.
Right.
It seems to be even with building E2. Are they all going to come back to be the same?
Well, we're recommending that it either be shortened or the whole building be pushed back so that it matches that one to the left.
Only E1, not E2?
Right.
What, if I may, why not E2?
Because the E1 has, is a different kind of porch than E2, and, you know, just keeping it all back beyond the one that protrudes the furthest.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Yes, Robin, I have one more question. 5.2 sidewalks. New sidewalks or walkways should remain visually compatible with the materials and placement of historic walkways. Germantown has brick sidewalks. Is that to be followed as well?
I'm not sure that we have the ability to review sidewalks. We do walkways within the development, but sidewalks are really within the.
Like at the curb?
Public Works purview, but I'm sure that if the applicant's here, he'll address that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. Anyone who would like to come forward and address this? If you'll state your name and address, please.
Justin Low. I'm with Centric Architecture, where the architects on this project address, 35 Peabody Street. We agree with all the comments from Robin and Historic. So we, I think we are fine with all that. To answer your question about sidewalks, if that's okay. We're, the sidewalk along Sixth is definitely the brick pavers. The only place where we're modifying that, there's an existing, there's an existing curb cut made for a drive there now that's concrete. And so we're taking advantage of that to sort of create an ADA access. So we may have to expand that just a little bit. I think per Metro Public Works, it needs to expand by a couple of feet. But then, other than that, we're leaving all the brick sidewalks as they are.
Thank you.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I do have a quick question. On elevation E1 to Taylor Street, when I heard four stories, I hadn't, it surprised me, but then when I look at the elevation, it certainly appears, I know that the grade change is significant there in the house. At E1 is, both the original house and the existing has a rather tall foundational height. So that gives me less, I guess, less cause. Four stories sounds like a lot, when in fact, it certainly appears within, I don't know, feet of being same as the existing residents there. And that's a correct representation, I assume?
Yes.
Great. Four stories sounds like a lot, when in fact, it certainly appears within, I don't know, feet of being the same as the existing residents there, and that's a correct representation, I assume?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And I can comment, but I know we're in a hurry, so...
Yep, thanks.
I'll say yes, that's correct.
We don't want you to compromise anything, but we... Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Let's hear the motion.
Okay, the motion for 1318, 1326 Sixth Avenue North, to approve according to staff recommendations listed for materials, windows, front balconies, and all the reviews already listed. That is my motion.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 1807 Fourth Avenue North?
All right. 1807 Fourth Avenue North. This photo here shows a non-contributing institutional building that was recently approved for demolition. And the application now is for a proposal to build a two-story, two-family dwelling. The building will be 32 feet tall and 32 feet wide, and gets about a foot wider on each side in the middle section, there. And staff found that the width and height are compatible with nearby historic houses, and that the form is actually similar to a historic two-story house nearby. Here are some houses on either side of this parcel. As you can see, they vary in width and height. And there's the similar form at the end of this block. That wider section in the middle that I mentioned, staff found that that helped to break up the massing and provide some articulation on an otherwise continuous wall, so it looks obviously flat here in elevation, but in 3D, staff found that the perceived massing would be appropriate. The materials are typical and appropriate for new construction, cement fiber siding, et cetera. The windows and doors will be wood, but staff would ask to review the specific selections prior to installation. Staff recommends approval of the new building at 1807 Fourth Avenue North with the condition that the specific window and door selections are approved by staff, finding that otherwise it meets the design guidelines for Salem Town Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
All right, okay.
And there is an applicant here.
Okay, would you like to come forward and talk to us about your application? If you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Jason Feller. I reside at 1115 Douglas Avenue. Really, in a lot of Salem Town, there's not a lot of context for historical classes. There's a lot of '70s and very unattractive homes. But one of them that I really liked is the Fourth and Coffee one that he showed you at the end of the block. And so it's not, when I drove by it before, it looks like it's in a lot worse shape than it looks in that picture. So I just, I wanted to kind of maintain that character, that historic style in the neighborhood, because I think it's one of my favorite houses in that area.
Do you all have any questions for the applicant?
One quick one. Not all the time, but oftentimes, in the interest of privacy, you've got a full-length front porch, and, you know, you'll see a screen wall or something that'll come up kind of after the fact. Is that planned for this?
We had actually initially had a, there's a middle column, and we had had a wall, actually, between, that hid behind the middle column, that we took out on the request of these guys. At this point, you know, I don't, as far as a permanent structure, no. If the homebuyers would like to set up some sort of furniture, I don't know. That would address that issue, you know, that would be something that they could maybe...
I ask this because oftentimes, we'll see things that find their way into it, that certainly that porch would read as different and might need to take a different form if you wanted to identify those as two individual things that had ownership to each side, and it might warrant a different design solution. But I feel like not having it there certainly is more in keeping with the intent or the design of a house of this nature, so I just wanted to clarify there.
Right. And honest, and yes, that was certainly something we wanted to do, but understand the historical context, that having that barrier there doesn't make sense. I think, not only do I like that house at Fourth and Coffee, it was also a good representation of something that was full-two-story, that would pass as historical. It was hard to find another example structurally, massing-wise, that wouldn't make sense.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. All right, any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
2001 Russell?
I'm missing one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I knew we had some... 3501 Byron? Hold on, there was no one here, I think, for 3501 Byron? Let's go ahead and do 1107 Lillian first. I'm sorry. And then we'll back up to that one, because there's no one here.
No trouble at all. It's actually the same applicant, so that's certainly logical. I'll just have to skip ahead in the PowerPoint. I already did that one, okay. 1107 Lillian Street is an application for new construction. A proposal for infill was denied for this parcel last month, but the non-contributing structure shown there was approved for demolition. The proposed new building will be one-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling. The form of the house will be primarily side-gabled, with a lower projecting gable at the front and a recessed partial width porch. I've gone into detail in your recommendation packets on the height and width, but I'll just summarize and say that we found it to be compatible with surrounding historic houses. The exterior materials are, again, the typical materials for new construction. The windows and doors will be wood, and staff will ask to review their selections prior to installation. Here are some shots, images of the context on the 1100 block of Lillian Street. Not much in the way of historic buildings there. And this, just a reminder that the lot in question, 1107, is shorter than the typical lot of the street by about half, and you can see that the building, the current building, non-contributing, of course, but that's smaller directly in proportion to the lot size. The proposal would include a paved parking area at the front of the lot, at the front edge. Essentially, there is no sidewalk, so this would be right at the boundary of the front property line, parallel to the street. A side yard, driveway, isn't necessarily practical due to the unusual lot size, but the front yard parking is not typical either for historic houses in the area. And staff does not find the proposed front parking to be compatible. Oh, and I can highlight it there. Staff does recommend approval of the new house at 1107 Lillian Street with the conditions that the specific windows and doors are approved by staff, and that there's not a front yard parking area. And with those conditions, staff finds that this project meets the design guidelines for the Lakeland Springs Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And again, the applicant is here, and he would like to address or pose questions to you regarding the parking.
Sean, on the parking, I know that on this street, I think, in the last few years at least, we've approved a couple instances of that front parking.
Yeah, here are actually a few shots. The top left there is just people parking on the street, because that's what a lot of the people do. The other pictures, the two at the bottom are actually the same house from different angles, but that and the one above are areas where the commission and with staff's recommendation has approved those front yard parking areas.
What's the difference here?
Well, these are a much steeper lot. Here, there is not room for a driveway or... Yeah, well, because a lot is steep, you wouldn't be able to get a driveway here. This one is just not quite the same situation. The house, that is the driveway of the house to the left of it. This house does not have a driveway at all.
I agree with the recommendation. I went by there the other night, because after reading this in the package, I thought about that and remembered some that had been approved. And my personal opinion is, we should stop doing that, because it looks bad and it doesn't function properly. There are, people are pulling in to, as if it's a parallel parking spot, with another person parked like this, so you have two cars parked sideways on the street with then more cars coming this. It's starting to look like a haphazard parking lot, just from the two that we already made. I think we made a mistake and should stop doing it. It's my personal opinion.
Sean, is there an alley there?
There's not an alley. There is no alley. The lot is, I think, 40 feet shorter than the typical lot for the area. We didn't necessarily have something specific to recommend as an alternative, but thought that the applicant would...
Would the recommendation of just shifting the house to give them some space on one side for a narrow drive?
They'd have to give up some house. I mean, there's not much...
Well, I mean, we'd also have to, we'd have to alter setbacks as well. I mean, I know it's tiny.
Those are, yes, issues, obviously, that we considered, and ultimately, we just...
So those were all discussed, and this is what, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Questions of staff?
And there's not enough room to make a driveway on that left-hand side, right?
Not with the current house that's being proposed.
Would we allow a drive up to the house, up to one side or the other?
It'd be the same thing.
Which way?
It would result in the same thing.
Yeah, the front setback on this part of the street, there's not much front yard. It's...
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, the applicant would like to come forward? If you'll state your name and address again, please.
My name's Jason Feller. I reside at 1115 Douglas Avenue. I understand the parking. On that street, the actual, the one that's proposed was put in there initially at last month's submission as a solution that has been approved by you guys, which is why it's in this drawing. I don't particularly care for it, and I don't mind if it goes away, but it was an effort to solve the problem. As you can see in the top-left picture, I mean, everybody's parking along the street, and I imagine it'll continue to be that. If we, you know, it'd be, I guess, up to you guys if you wanted to reduce the setback on one side to maybe three feet, where we could shift the entire house over. There wouldn't be room for a driveway to go to the side of the house regardless, but maybe some sidewalk strips to park one car in front of the house could be an option. We're open to whatever parking situation is necessary, even if that means they park on the street, just like everybody else.
But you're comfortable with the staff recommendations?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I want your conversation.
All right, thank you. All right. Close the public hearing.
I think I kind of second Aaron on, you know, the future of how this parking gets to be designed or whatever, on the front versus on the side, and, you know, strip parking seems to be very, you know, very good kind of solution. So, I mean, he's actually, the applicant has said that that might be a possible solution for him, for parking, instead of the front.
So you're saying like it's a pull-in, two strips, it's a pull-in, and it just...
Well, I think Robin was saying that really creates the same situation.
In our opinion, it does. And I just wanted to let you know, too, that if you are discussing moving the building over, we have not noticed a setback determination, so that would need to be done first.
And I think if we did, we'd have to talk, I mean, it's already 37 feet wide, I think we'd have to talk about shrinking the building.
All right. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendation and those conditions.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's do Highway 100, 1221 Forest Park Drive.
Actually, we skipped 3501 Byron. If we could run back and pick that one up.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Are you here, are you here for Byron?
No, he's here.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. All right. We're doing Highway 100, right?
Highway 100.
Request of the applicant.
Okay.
This is for a golf club house at Percy Warner. The golf course is a non-contributing area to the Percy Warner National Register nomination. It is located on the opposite side of the golf course from the historic areas of the park. The construction will not require the demolition of any historic features nor significantly impact the view shed from any historic locations. Staff recommends approval of the new Percy Warner Golf Club house as the project meets all guidelines for new construction at a landmark site.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Applicant, would you like to come forward and give your name and address, please? Thanks for your patience.
My name is Rebecca Ratz. I work for the Metro Parks Department, and I'm in charge of this project, and don't really have too much to say about it. I think it fits well with the context of the park, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant?
Make a motion to move approval. My staff's recommendation.
Second. All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And I would just make a request, in the future, when we have other metro agencies, we put them on the front as to not delay the resources at work in our government.
All right, 3501 Byron.
And finally, 3501 Byron Avenue Lot 8 is an application for infill construction on a vacant lot in the Byron Close Development. This is the site of the demolished former Ransom School next to I-440 at West End. Here's completed infill across Ransom Avenue. The new Ransom Avenue of Lot 3 approved last year. The Lot 8 is in the foreground and approximately there. The project meets design guidelines for setback and rhythm of spacing. Vehicle access to the attached garage will be from the private drive at the rear of the lot, at the bottom of the slide. A sidewalk will be built from the house's front porch to Ransom Avenue. The size and height of the structure are acceptable for the context and meet design guidelines for height and scale. Staff also finds the proposed infill to meet the design guidelines for materials, roof form, orientation, and appurtenances. Staff finds that the proposed proportion and rhythm of openings also meets the design In conclusion, staff recommends approval of proposed infill at 3501 Byron Avenue Lot 8 with the conditions that staff provide final review of windows, doors, and the color of roofing, brick and stone, finding the project meets design guidelines for infill in the Elmington Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Oh, this looks familiar, without a building on it. Okay, any questions of staff? All right, anyone here that would like to address this on this development, the application? I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
Move approval with staff recommendation?
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
If I could, I'd just like to remind you of the design charretts coming up. The next one's this Monday. The last one will be on April 28. They're at 5:30. They're at the same location. It's a great opportunity to just sit down and draw and really try to come to some potential solutions or ideas to give you for potential solutions for these issues that you deal with all the time. Of course, additions will be next month, and that is all we have.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Or adjourn?
You got adjourned.
Second. Need a adjourned.